Evening, everybody. Welcome to our Wednesday, November eighth, City Council meeting. We are starting the evening off with a workshop on the 2024 proposed budget. Just we'll do a quick housekeeping and do a quick roll call for for workshop and then we'll let Kyle run off with the budget. Councilmember Cargill.
Present.
Councilmember Kurtz.
Present.
Councilmember Van Orman.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tempolier. That's Member Spencer.
Here.
That's when we're done.
Happy to be here.
And Councilmember Salberg. All right, all present and accounted for. So we're going to go ahead. Sorry for the last minute agenda change. What Mark will talk about that a little bit later. So we decided to go ahead and use this time as to get a jump on our budget discussions. It's mostly in information at the six o'clock portion. I don't think we're going to get into the question and the line items quite yet in this session. We'll see how how we go. And then we've got some time at the seven o'clock. So take it away, Kyle.
Excellent. Thanks, Mayor, Council. So I have provided a copy of the slides that we'll be reviewing here at six o'clock. Many of you may be familiar with this. This might seem like I'm repeating myself. For some of you, it'll be a little bit of a refresher on the process of adopting the annual budget. And anybody else, this is basically the fundamentals, the one on one of annual budget adoption and the processes related there. So what is, next slide, please, Jacob. So what is the purpose of the annual budget? Serves a couple of different things. It serves as a policy document, obviously, reviewing and approve an approving financial resources by council during the budget process serves as a policy document identifying priorities for the upcoming year. It serves as an operational guide and sets financial controls in place upon the passage of the annual budget to guide city employees regarding projects, events, level of service expected, so on and so forth. It serves as a financial plan and is the mechanism by which the city funds will be managed during the given period. allocations are based on both current and long term needs and account for unforeseen contingencies. And then lastly, it's a public document. The annual budget provides a comprehensive list of city functions, projects and services in one document. The review process allows for and encourages public review of city operations and their impacts on the citizens and repairs. Next slide, please. So this gives you a little preview of where it starts and where it finishes. And so the annual budget operates on a calendar year basis. It uses incremental budget budgeting that assumes for most functions that the current year's budget is indicative of the base required for the following year. Any increases are incremental and are based on need, emerging issues, council goals and available resources. Implementation of the annual budget begins upon its adoption with preparation of the following year's budget beginning as needed in late spring and early summer. So you see some some highlighted points here as early as, you know, late spring, early summer, we have department requests for program services for the upcoming year, potential additional staff. If if that, if those resources are already identified for the following year, directors will prepare their budget requests for the upcoming year in the light summer. Those will be compiled and given to the clerk and the mayor in September for the development of the preliminary budget. In October, the preliminary budget is delivered to council and public hearing on sources of revenue is held, which we had last month, obviously. So as we begin now, council review of the preliminary budget, council adoption of the property tax levy, we do have a first read of that for consideration tonight. And the final public hearing on the proposed budget is anticipated later this month. And obviously in December, final review and adoption of the annual budget. No resources can be spent for the following year until the budget is adopted for that year. So we always want to make sure we give ourselves enough time heading into December. Our budget calendar, if anybody recalls, the plan is to have it adopted by December fifth. And so if everything goes kind of according to plan, that's great. We have that buffer of December nineteenth this year if needed, if further deliberation is 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 requested. Next slide, please. So the city operates its budget according to fund accounting. The accounts of the city are organized on the basis of funds in 2024. The city will use twenty five separate funds. It's hard to recall it. Last year, the city used twenty six funds. What you will not see this year is the ARPA fund. So we essentially closed the book on that this fall with an interfund transfer of the remaining amount to our real estate excise two tax fund for completion of the Public Works Building as directed by council. So so you will not see any ARPA funds allocated. That fund is dormant. And so we are down to twenty five funds. Type of funds are as followed. Governmental funds, that's your operational funds, capital funds, things of that nature. We have proprietary funds. The easiest example of that is our golf operations, our golf course. Fees are paid by the users of that service. And then lastly, we do have a fiduciary fund where we hold funds in a custodial capacity. Most often on behalf of the state treasurer. So we are essentially a pass through, but we have to account for those funds in a manner that is separate from everything else. So those are not true revenues and those are not true expenditures. Next slide, please, Jacob. So the first of these is governmental funds. There are four main types that we operate on. Everybody is familiar with the general fund. That is where we house all of our operational expense. It is, it accounts for all financial resources and transactions except for those specifically or elected or specifically required or elected to be accounted for in other funds. Others, special revenue funds. Those account for revenues that are either legally or legislatively restricted to finance particular activities of the city. We have three separate tourism related funds that have a specific use and we'll get into that as we dive into those fund summaries. The the most notable one is streets. So the city made a conscious determination to allocate utility tax for use of street operations. And as we all know, and as we'll get into, we have a transition on our hands from utility tax to transportation benefit district sales tax that will be on the agenda for council consideration for official adoption on November twenty first. Capital project funds support the acquisition of major construction or renovation of the city's major physical assets. Such projects add value to the community or significantly increase the useful life of a facility. We have several capital project funds. The two main ones we use and the two major revenue sources that we derive that from is real estate excise tax one and two. And for our purposes, they are substantially the same income and expense stream. So real estate excise tax two, as we've discussed a little bit, is a little bit more restrictive by RCW. For our purposes, we have a capital facilities plans that outlines all of our requirements to expend funds essentially the same as we would real estate excise tax one through our planning processes. Lastly, we have a debt service fund. This is new. So debt service funds account for the accumulation of resources to pay principal, interest and related costs of general long term debt. We all know that the trailhead, the trailhead improvements fund will be used as that repayment fund. It's going to have a dual purpose. Now, we are finishing up, obviously, poles and netting this year and early into next year. That is also we are using that as our long term repayment fund. As well. Next slide, please. So the second is proprietary funds. We touched on that a little bit. And so also called enterprise funds. Enterprise funds account for operations that provide goods or services that are supported primarily through user charges. And so outside of golf operations, we have other enterprise funds that may not seem like enterprise funds. We have the Aquifer Protection Fund. And so that is funded through user charges that are collected with property taxes. And so the users of the October protection benefit is essentially it's a user fee that is that is collected by the county and it is treated as such. So that is why that is considered an enterprise one or proprietary fund as well. So the other ones we have are internal service funds. So we have unemployment. So we self insure for unemployment. So we have funds allocated towards paying those specific unemployment costs instead of paying a premium every month for for state related services. So the city has enjoyed substantial cost savings by going that route. And that is something I highly encourage going forward. Also, as a benefit to employees, we have a medical reimbursement fund. So this acts as a medical bridge. So we offer a high deductible plan that saves the city substantial healthcare costs. And so as a benefit, if you reach your deductible, you have this bridge to reach your out of pocket maximum. And that is provided by the city as a benefit. And as a trade off for the substantial savings we have for offering the high deductible plan. And then lastly, we touched on it. Fiduciary funds are accounted in a for remint says held in a custodial capacity for the state treasurer. Next slide, please. So the city operates on a cash basis form of accounting. So essentially what that is, is revenues are recognized only when cash is received and when expenditures are paid. So there is an accrual form of counting that's very popular as well. And so that accounts for the cost at the time the decision is made to incur that cost. So you have a little bit different mechanism for tracking revenue and expenditures. So our general revenue and expenditure projection policy, I think, is fairly well documented. We have a phenomenal revenue system in place here in Liberty Lake. We are very, very fortunate to have the economic and business base that that we have here. And so obviously, our biggest single source of revenue is sales tax. That is highly inelastic. So what we're looking at when we talk about inelastic revenue streams is what we could count on. What is not a one time revenue source? And so you have property tax, you have a base of sales tax. Yes, will that fluctuate a little bit? Yes, but you have a solid base that you can count on year over year. Going forward and planning long term projections for for costing all of our services that we provide. And so we have a couple of sources of potentially inelastic. There is a portion of sales and use tax that is inelastic. And so we are subject potentially to local, regional, nationwide economic downturn that can either reduce the rate at which we're going or stifle it altogether. And so we have a real estate excise tax is another great example of a potentially inelastic or elastic source of revenue. We have a solid base of real estate excise tax dollars coming in that we can count. Last year, we had a series of substantial transactions that occurred within the city that really boosted that that annual line item to a million dollars in each fund. And that isn't something we can ever count. And so we can count on a little over half that half of that every year. And we can look at what the what the five year trend has been previous and what, you know, between, you know, us as city leaders and Lisa as a planning director have in the pipeline to account for what we know is what we can count on revenue. And so so those are a couple of examples of both. Services will generally match the city's inelastic revenue sources. And if at any time during the year expenditure and revenue reestimates project an operating deficit, the city will take immediate corrective action. We have systems in place to do that. And as you guys will review on a monthly basis, we have kind of our financial dashboard that that I send out along with our monthly report. And so you will see, you know, some indications of stress if that ever happens. And we can, we can get out in front of that if that's ever the case and take some corrective action on that. Next slide, please. So we're all familiar with the capital facilities plan. We've had a first run through it here. That is obviously a planning document adopted annually that reflects both new projects and asset management investments scheduled for implementation or completion over the preceding six years. Projects identified in the CFP will have in-house funding sources dedicated to each or, as I've noted here, will be identified in the unfunded projects list. But will also be eligible for other various local, regional, state or nationwide funding mechanisms simply by their inclusion in this document. So we've had that discussion before. We have a need. We have a documented avenue to carry this out. We just don't have any funding for it. So let's put it on there. And let's go after some some funding and help get some partners together that will help stay for it. So just by a simple inclusion that opens us up to resources we wouldn't otherwise have. Next slide, please. So fee schedules. We did this last year with golf operations. You'll see this as we get into the later stages of our budget review. Lisa has provided a pretty comprehensive update of fee schedules for the planning side for permits, plan reviews. And so we'll chew through that kind of as we as we get towards the end of our budget document. But the city will charge user fees for various services when it's appropriate and permitted by laws. Fees will generally be set at a level related to the cost of providing the service. And staff will review user fees at least every three years to adjust for the effects of inflation and other factors as appropriate. Next slide, please. So a quick rundown of special revenue funds. We touched on this a little bit earlier. We are planning to transition to the TPD sales tax for street operations funding. We have three separate revenue streams for tourism funds. So we have our two percent lodging tax that goes towards annual events that are designed to attract tourists. We have our tourism capital fund that was implemented in 2016. We have not yet identified a activity for that yet. It's coming. I know that we have interest potentially from the hub. But anybody else that meets the criteria for use of these capital funds is obviously more than welcome to come have a discussion with the lodging tax advisory committee and council as well on potential use of these funds. And so the other is a tourism promotion area. And this is essentially a passer. So we send these dollars to visit Spokane to coordinate marketing efforts on behalf of the city. So we take that in as revenue. And a hundred percent of that revenue is passed along to visit Spokane. Other ones are transportation impact fees for the Harvard Road mitigation fund that we've used for several projects. The Stormwater Utility Fund, we have the annual service fee collected with property tax. And then, as we mentioned before, the Aquifer Protection Fund is charged per water sewer connection with property tax. Next slide, please. And here is a rundown of all of the funds that are supported directly by the general fund. And so we have Parks and Arts Commission. They have a three year strategic plan that they adopt. And they provide their request for funding within that. We have our restricted reserve fund, which we boosted last year. And as we'll get into a little bit later, our interest rate performance is such that we do not have to touch that again for this year. So I'd be very happy to report that when that comes. Oh, we have the Library Capital Fund, Municipal Facilities Master Plan Fund. So this is when the city is looking at full build out, what do municipal facilities need to look like? And so we will be spending some planning dollars on this in twenty twenty four and twenty twenty five to give council and the city a vision for what we think this looks like, you know, in twenty forty and beyond. And so we have the Police Capital Fund. We have been so fortunate. So Kevin Rudin has has really, really helped out the city and the PD in the last couple of years with a donation. And this is where that donation is housed and that is used kind of as needed by the police for appropriate capital functions. We have the Community Messaging Fund. So there was a campaign to get, I think, the four corners of Liberty Lake with a sign that was a kind of essentially a reader board, much like we have here at the corner of Liberty Lake and Country Vista. And so we have funding if if the city identifies another appropriate space for it, we can certainly look at that. And pull the trigger if if council and the mayor so choose. And then we have the Underground Utility Fund. We had a great use for this fund last year. We're able to underground some overhead utilities really at the same space I just mentioned, the corner of Liberty Lake Road and Country Vista. And so any opportunity that we can kind of beautify Liberty Lake, well, we put money aside every year to to do that. We have the Building Contingency Fund. This fund was born out of a couple of unforeseen issues that arose, I think, with the library first and then with the PD where we had some roofing issues. And so these are things that are absolutely not. You can't ever plan for kind of these major you know, incidents that require substantial substantial repair. So the city made the determination to set aside $125,000 and refund this fund only for the amount you. So we haven't used any for twenty twenty three yet. We used a portion for the PD, I believe, in twenty twenty two. And the fund is essentially reset to 125,000 every year. So if if we spent $9,000, we would refund, you know, that $9,000 to reset it to the 125 every year. And then the aforementioned internal service funds that we've kind of already gone through. So so with that, I wanted to pause for any questions. If anybody has any questions on the process, we'll get into some of the specifics later, but I'll I'll hold for questions for now.
Yeah, go ahead. Your first time, go ahead.
Your mic.
Yeah, don't forget to put your mic down.
I'm new at this. Kyle, regarding the internal service funds, can you, you don't call out how our retirement funds are handled? Can you talk about that a little bit?
So retirement funds are a very product of the benefits that you see in each line item within the general fund. So those are considered operating, essentially operating and salary and staffing costs.
Understand. I guess my question, I'll try to rephrase it. Does the city handle the distribution of the retirement funds after retirement? Or is that a third party?
That is a third party.
So we pay into a third party fund for the benefit of the employees when they retire?
Correct. Yep.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
On the cash basis accounting, you were talking about, if we get into trouble with the corrective action, can you tell me what the corrective action would be?
So corrective action can be a number of different things. It is service level reduction. It is, you know, up into and including use of our restricted reserve fund. I had another example in there that I wanted to draw on, but
hiring freeze.
Yeah. So so we have, and that that obviously is a not an exhaustive list. We have any number of different resources that we can kind of lean on to reduce costs and try to, you know, right the ship that was unforeseen at the start of the year.
And we've had to do that before, you know, when when Wendy had the unfortunate experience of trying to manage things through the recession. We we cut hours of the trailhead and the library and hiring freeze. And then during COVID, we had a hiring freeze and things like that. So
I'm just curious, is there an actual policy that says what goes first or is that council's prerogative?
So that would be council's prerogative, and I would hope that that would be council's prerogative. We have that discussion candidly and and come to a joint conclusion.
Yep.
Great. I'll save my other questions for another another time.
All right, anybody else? Right. Not go ahead. Kyle, next.
Okay, great. So what I would like to do is save our save getting into the actual budget document for a seven o'clock workshop. And so do we time check here?
Six twenty five.
Twenty two. So let's go through. If you will all indulge me so we can save a little bit time at seven o'clock. Jacob, if we can pull up the third quarter financial update. So we had said had that saved for the city administrator report. I think this is an appropriate place to really touch on where we're at through September. And I've also have that printed out for everybody as well. So thank you. Next slide, please, Jacob. So all of these actual amounts are obviously through the end of September. And so the general fund major revenue streams will list them all right here. We have budgeted $2.6 million for property tax. Through September, we've only collected 1.4 million, which is 54%. I think we've gone through this enough and we've done this enough where I think everybody realizes we have two major points during the year where we collect essentially ninety to ninety five percent of these funds. And so we actually, we we receded $910,000 today of property tax. So we're up to about ninety three or ninety four percent. So so that said, property tax, you can set your watch to it. We know we're going to get sales and use tax. You know, lately, this has just been kind of a nonstop delivery of good news. And I just, I can't continue to stress how easy this makes my job when we continue to see these numbers and we're not having our discussions like some other cities are. So so we've collected 93% of our annual budget of sales tax to the end of September. So we have three more months of collections. And we're obviously going to greatly exceed what we had planned to exceed in sales and use tax for 2023. In 2022, at this point, we had collected 4.09 million. So even year over year, we have a 15% increase in collections from 2023 based on 2022 at this point in time. Permits and planning are another broken record. Lisa's staff is going like gangbusters nonstop and it is truly reflected in the revenues that you see here. That is a direct cost recovery revenue stream of the work, you know, that's that's being put in and the level of service that they are delivering to our ever growing population. So more great news to report there. They've they've essentially receded what they thought they were going to receive through September for the entire year. Next slide, please. So general fund expenditures, we budgeted 14.4 million this year. Through September, we were at nine million. So we're tracking right where we need to be. And so we're at 63% of that annual budget. If you look at each marker this year, we've been incredibly consistent on where we end at. And you'll see the one outlier is June thirtieth, we had an additional million because we just got a million from property tax distributions. And so 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 our our ending balances with everything that goes on in this fund is incredibly stable. And you'll you'll see why on the next slide, why we anticipate quite a bump here in the next month or so. Next slide, please. So as we've been talking about for a while, and I just got off the phone with the county again today. So they're putting forth the resolution to officially approve and it's it's, I don't want to call it a rubber stamp, but it essentially is to approve the reimbursement from the Tiff and Lift Fund for $3.3 million into the general fund. So that will happen, I want to say on December eighth. And so we would get that checked that following week. And so that's why you see such a boost in the third or in the fourth quarter, heading into a beginning balance in the general fund for next year. We do still have a $1 million down payment for trailhead construction. So we are trying to anticipate how much work we think is going to get done this year. How much we'll put off to next year. We will allocate the 1 million to the Trailhead Improvements Fund, which is where that project is getting costed from. And that will just carry over into next year. So we have the resources to finish that project in the first quarter of 2024. And then future policy discussion. We had on the docket potentially tonight to discuss, what are we going to do with this potential new revenue stream? Public Safety Sales Tax. And that isn't obviously the discussion that needs any further vetting. So if we'll we'll account for it again if it comes forward and find an appropriate use for that and see where we can cut in other ways. But really, our future policy discussion in terms of what next year and going forward is going to look like largely revolves around how the transition from utility tax to the transportation benefit sales tax ultimately affects the streets fund. So we we understand there's going to be a little bit of a difference in the revenue. We're going to make it work any way we can. We will have to discuss if if services are outperforming the revenue that takes to provide that service. We'll have we'll have a discussion on how we can account for that. If that's potentially a interfund transfer from the general fund to the streets fund for the difference in that. That is the that's that's really the only potential we have for discussion. And I don't foresee that. It's definitely not going to happen next year, but thinking long term what that might look like. Next slide, please. Next slide, please. Streets fund. So utility tax revenue continues again to outpace uh projections. Um, so we are right at where we need to be in terms of expense. Uh, the streets crew is obviously prepping, you know, kind of beginning in September. Uh, for the oncoming of winter and and accumulating resources to attack that eventually. So. Um, so you'll see uh a a lot of kind of the same discussion that we had on the general fund. Can be had for the streets fund. And so it's just, we're operating on a little bit of a smaller margin. And this is just something we'll have to keep an eye on going forward as we transition into DVD sales tax. Next slide, please. Real estate excise tax. So as we discussed a little bit during our budget overview. Uh, so REIT revenue combined through September is nine hundred and forty-nine thousand dollars. So that's both funds. At this time last year, it was about one point five million. So you can see. Just the, I I guess the. Unpredictable nature of, you know, these substantial. Um, transactions that happen within our city, what what can, what we can realize out of that. And so. So this is right where, you know, we planned to be. And so this is obviously a a critical revenue stream for the city as we manage. All of the different projects that are on our capital facilities plan and finding a mechanism to fund all of those. Next slide, please. Golf operations. So. We we touched on a little bit during our fee schedule. We increased prices essentially across the board uh over at the golf course. And we were. I would say, oh. Very aggressive in our projections and we crushed them again. And so. There, they continue uh kind of across the board. They continue to outperform what we think they're going to. And so as we've talked about. Any last. Fund balance that isn't going to go towards operations is going to get put directly back into that debt repayment. Uh, to supercharge that payout. So uh, they're sitting at about six hundred and ninety thousand. We grabbed a chunk from there last year to finish. I- improvements. And so, you know, they had, um, you know, starting off. Uh. Rided around um. No, five hundred anything. So you can see how this ending balance continues to grow. And we've already paid off. The principal and um. The principal and interest portion for this year. So this excess, what we don't need is going to get put into that fund. And when there is no longer a prepayment penalty, we're going to in five hundred thousand dollar increments. Um, prepay off that one. And so looking ahead, we will have. Uh, the driving range closed for some time. We did that on purpose in the winter to minimize uh the effect of any revenue and. And access the public has to to that facility. So. Those will get uh torn down and put up in short order and ready for uh next spring. So. Yeah, absolutely, yeah.
Um, on. On the extra money that we're gonna have that we're gonna put towards the. The balance, you you were um, you were mentioning that. Obviously, we've got a a couple of year period where we have a prepayment penalty. Can you remind us when that expires?
Uh, so in five years. So we have a, it's a two percent prepayment penalty for the first two years, a one percent prepayment penalty. The following two years after that, and then no penalty.
So between now and the fifth year, are we putting that uh extra balance in a in a uh fund that can? Earn some interest or something?
Yep. So that trailhead improvements fund, that three thirty will transition into the repayment fund.
Right.
And so we'll see that balance grow because we don't, it doesn't make sense for us to put any extra payment toward if we're gonna get. Dinged for it. So come that fifth year, I would fully expect to see a substantial amount of money that we're gonna throw at that repayment.
Okay, thank you.
Next slide, please. And so you guys, this is just another visual that that you guys see every month um that, you know, we're hitting all of our marks. I I'm not concerned. About the trajectory of any of our major. Um. Revenue or expense streams. And so I'm I'm. Happy to report the position uh that we're currently. And for that, I'll stand for any other questions from that.
Good, Chris.
One more quick uh quick question, uh Kyle, regarding the um, the transition from the utility tax to the TBD sales tax. Um. Do I assume you, maybe you know these numbers off the top of your head, how that impacts the budget if we don't go to the TBD sales tax? Uh, and the reason why I ask that question is because, well, I support it. I'm not sure that the, that we have a majority that supports it. So. Um, I guess my question is, is it, is it easy for you to switch back and forth if we decide that we're not going to go with the TBD sales tax?
Oh, um, it, I mean, there is a, there's a transitory period of about two months. That you need to send out notifications for your collectors and and.
I'm just talking about you, actually. Uh, when you give us, when we start going through the 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 numbers, and I believe.
Oh, oh, sorry. Yeah, my apologies. Yes, yes. So we have not budgeted any, if if I'm tracking right here. We haven't budgeted any utility tax collection for twenty twenty.
But if we decide to stay with the utility tax.
We have, so we have those line, yes. So, yeah, we can, we can make that adjustment before the final adoption of the budget. And account for that pretty revenue versus the TBD.
Yeah, we we took the the worst-case scenario approach and putting everything together. Right, anybody else? Councilor done?
Yeah, uh, Kyle, regarding one-ten streets, um, current expense, uh, nine hundred and thirty-nine, a budget of one point three. I'm curious, we've spent a lot less than we expected. Has there been services that weren't provided?
Uh, no, so we have, uh, we plan for fourth quarter expenses as well. So you'll see tonight. Uh, substantial purchase for salt and and mag and other that. And a lot of it is just repairs getting ready for the winter season. Is really your substantial expense for for the streets fund on an operational level.
That totally expect to be around three hundred, four hundred thousand.
Street sweepers in there, right?
Oh, yeah. No, so the street sweeper is actually out of two other funds. So the street sweeper does not come out of that fund. No, so you're you're gonna start seeing maybe a little bit more overtime, a little bit more staffing for nights and weekends that we're starting to plow. So, yes, I I would see that approach. Maybe something to like the. You know, eighty-five to ninety-five. When we're all said and done. What we don't want to see is a hundred percent or over. Because then it's, we're coming back to you with, holy cow, we got some other problems going on. And so. So budgeting on the expenditure level, we do want a little bit of a buffer left at the end of the year.
Of course, um, it's, I mean, I'm grateful for the conservative approach regarding the total expenses and spending less than anticipated. What I'm looking for is just, we haven't necessarily not lived up to what we'd set out to do.
Understood, yeah.
Thanks.
Any other questions? All right. Anything else you wanna?
Yeah, let's dive into the budget if we want to. Not not line item, just overview.
Okay, go ahead and start with the overview.
The summary down and answer any questions that we might have before we dive into maybe line item or anything else.
Let's start with the uh org chart.
Yeah, let's do that. So, um, so as we get through the budget guide, we went through kind of a summary of the budget guide just now on kind of the. Ethos behind the annual budget process and and everything kind of entailed therein. I'll I'll pause for any questions before we get to the actual budget summary. So we have the budget guide that kind of outlined what we talked about. Was there any other questions? On that or any other material before we dive into the actual summary? Excellent. So on page twenty-six, I'll direct your eyes to the budget summary by fund. And this really is just like a thirty thousand foot view of what we expect for. Twenty twenty-four. The expenditure line item there, you'll see we have budgeted expenditures. For all twenty-five funds to total twenty-three point eight million. And you will see this number fluctuate based on the activity that we have. Year to year. So if you look at the twenty twenty-two annual budget. You'll see uh, or twenty twenty-three annual budget, you'll see expenditures approaching thirty-one million. Uh, for twenty twenty-two, you'll see expenditures approaching thirty-three million. And so. You have these fluctuations and those are easily explained. We had the Trailhead Improvements Project. We had Kramer Overpass. Uh, we had Kramer Parkway. We had the purchase of the library building. We had so much going on to account for. In those previous years. And we're we're sunsetting a lot of those major projects for for twenty twenty-four. So you'll see a a a reduction in the that overall cost. And so that's, that's obviously the. The primary driver for why. So on the next page, we have just a um, as we do every year, our list of the uh salary schedules. Um, does anybody have any questions on any of those additions? Um, once we go through that, we'll kind of get through the uh work chart as well.
I see. Go ahead, Councilmember Cargill.
I just want to confirm, Kyle, that I'm um, looking at this correctly. A ten new FTEs, is that right? Or ten new employees, maybe not all FTEs.
Right. And so you have, and and as we get into the department level review, we'll have additional. Um, explanation as to is this a true ad? Are we reallocating this elsewhere? Are we eliminating? A seasonal or a part-time to account for a full-time. And so we'll get in a little bit deeper dive into that as we get into each department review. And so one of the main things that myself and and your staff and the mayor really wanted to spend some time on is what. The organizational chart looks like now and going forward. And so we've identified essentially a a new department. That we're transitioning to for for twenty twenty-four. And so this has been in discussion for at least two years. And uh, we s- we saw fit as twenty twenty-four being the right time to make kind of this transition and is not. Purely, we have a new department and we have to allocate all of these additional resources to accommodate this department. This is a natural evolution. Of services for the city of Liberty Lake. So what you have included. There on the far right is a public works department. A new position included that in that is going to be a public works director pending approval by council. And what you have below that is all of the duties outlined for that new department. So obviously, we already had allocations and systems in place to account. For streets operations and street maintenance. We have a full-time position already on staff for project management. What this department is going to do, one of the primary um. Uh, goals and one of the primary uh. Um, services that they're going to provide is management of capital projects. And engineering. And so we're going to incorporate facets of the streets department. And facets of the operations department that are a natural fit to live under this department. So they are already accounted for. Where they were accounted for under Jen's crew, or they were accounted for under Lisa's crew are now. Under their own separate department. And what we have the benefit of doing is costing any increase to this. To funds that are not the streets fund and funds that are not the general fund. Your primary driver for both of the uh expenses for your new public works director. And your project management. Uh, employee. Is uh real estate excise tax. And a combination of. A small portion of streets and a tiny portion of planning. We have those allocations identified. Uh, in the line item and we'll um, get through those uh at the department level as well. So that's just another. Transition, you know, not. Totally unlike our transition out of, you know, utility tax to TBD. It's a natural evolution of where we think we need to be to continue to provide the services for for the city. Any questions on that restructuring or what that organizational chart looks like?
Only one. Oh, yeah, go ahead, Councilmember Van Norman.
Kyle, could we have anything there that we're looking at, or do we already currently have on staff? And this might be for Lisa too. Is uh for grant writer?
What?
Grant.
Yeah.
Grant writer.
So we we do not. We have that essentially baked into. The respective roles that might, you know, fall upon. You know, that director that that is responsible for carrying out whatever that capital project or function would be. So. An example would be in your line item for planning, uh, we have um. The name is, it's the climate resiliency grant and. Requirement along with that grant. Uh, to build out our comprehensive plan to account for, you know. The city's eventual use and current use of of carbon emissions and how to mitigate that to the extent that we can. And so that naturally just fell on Lisa as a planning document. So she, with the assistance of of her uh staff, were able to put that grant together. And submitted and and get funding for for this essential requirement that we have coming down the pike. So that's, that's kind of what. That's some, that's the approach we have now. We don't have one person dedicated to um. Writing grants, so.
May I make a suggestion?
Absolutely.
If there's a possibility of getting extra. Um, training and so forth for. Probably two or three that would be who views, they'll pay for themselves just by a grant that they write. Um. It works. In several different avenues. But didn't know if we had one currently and um. Within the staff.
Well, I know. So um, one of the things that the PD is looking at, because there's also grants available for law enforcement. We're going through interviews right now. Um, Sockdy had is still working for his part-time as evidence custodian, but she took a a another job with another. Um, jurisdiction so she could mostly she can work from home. Um, but we're interviewing for replacement with the hopes that. That person will help at least with the PD grants. So we're trying to get that in. There's also other outside resources available if we have something. Large enough because there the requirements for grant writing just get more and more onerous every year. You have to, you know, include your your public outreach and your DEI and all of that. So. Um, you know, there's, there's definitely other resources that we can use in the meantime while we're while we're approaching that. But good, really good point. Appreciate that.
Absolutely. And and a, a. I I I guess as we get into twenty twenty-four, I I guess in my mind, an obvious landing spot for that. Would be, we have um requested in the budget. Uh, one of our new full-time staff is a procurement specialist that's going to touch every single department in the city. And so that would be a natural landing spot for that person to develop those skills uh to uh provide that service for us.
Councilmember Kurtz. My question is sort of similar to all of these. Um, just wanting to know the discussions you guys have had of ground economic development specifically, because it talks about, you're talking about procurement, which is a question that I had. But then also um, Councilmember Van Norman's questions about um grant writing and stuff. And so I'm just wondering. Um, if you guys have a little bit of a sense of the future of economic development and a focus on that.
So uh, Lisa would be the best person to answer that. I can, uh, you know, speaking on her behalf to the extent that I can, I mean. I. It's good and bad, right? Because we have so much in the in in the pipeline. That can we, how how can we mitigate this cost? And we we have service fees to account for that. But how can we, you know, meet the level of service that our growing city demands? And those discussions are, we have those on a essentially a bi- bimonthly basis. In our directors meetings, like. How can we account for this? I have this, 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 and this to get through, but I don't know if I have the resource to do it. And so. That's, those are the discussions.
Well, and and we also, obviously, we have our partnerships with Greater Spokane Valley um. Chamber and GSI. So that's really, we really rely on our partners a lot for the economic development piece. Um, and um, like Kyle said, you know, we're in a really fortunate position that, you know, businesses are knocking down our doors. Uh, it's not always going to be that way. So we always need to obviously keep looking in the future, but. We're in a really good position right now, and those partnerships have been really, really valuable in, you know, bringing opportunities to us as well.
So if I can interject and provide some additional context, as we were going through and having the conversations about the strategic plan, and that was kind of a central theme that we talked about. We we, we had some conversations. Um, but. As you see the proposals that are in front of you in the budget, we we didn't feel that an economic development person. In twenty twenty-four rose to the same level of urgency as some of these others. And so it's definitely something that we want to continue to look at. And like the mayor said. leverage our partnerships. And as we see ourselves potentially outgrowing those as our prime economic development function, considering bringing on a, a person to focus on that. But twenty twenty-four is not our target year. Yeah.
Can I just, uh, ask a quick follow-up to, uh, Councilmember Van Orman's, uh, comments about a, um, grant writer? How many grants have we submitted this year? Does anyone know the answer to that?
Lisa probably.
I don't know that we know an aggregate answer.
All right. Thank you.
And we're expecting the answer on one of those this month, right? No, streets. All right. Well, it is, it's about nine till, so it seems like a pretty good stopping point. Take a break before seven o'clock, if that's okay with everybody. I'm not seeing any argument, so I'll go ahead. We will go ahead and break till seven o'clock. Thanks. A, um, November eighth city council meeting. Um, we know things are, look a little bit uh, strange from what they normally look like, but we are honored to have the Girl Scouts here with us tonight. We'll introduce them a little bit later. And so I'm going to go ahead and start us off with the invocation, and then they're going to present the flags and then they will, they will lead us in the pledge of allegiance. So, um, join me please for the invocation. Dear Father, thank you for bringing us all here together tonight, um, to do the work of, of the citizens here in Liberty Lake. Allow us to keep open minds and open ears so we can can really have a great dialogue, um, and respectful dialogue on any of our issues ahead of us. Um, as, as always, please, please have your hand on, on the hearts and, and, and the souls of all of our first responders, uh, with everything going on around our country and the world these days. Um, we really, really rely on, on our first responders and our military to, to keep us safe. So please keep them safe. Amen.
Attention, ladies and gentlemen. Color guard attention. Color guard advance. Color guard, post your colors. Color guard, salute your colors. Ladies and gentlemen, please join us in saying the pledge of allegiance. I pledge of allegiance to the
Hey, we're going to go ahead, you know, we're going
Color guard dismiss.
You guys, if you guys want to, uh, we don't have many chairs, but if you guys want to, if you're okay on the floor, if you want to sit in front of the audience, because we're going to do a proclamation for you a little bit later, and I'm going to introduce you and, um, your fearless leader over here is going to say a few words. We'll get rearranged here. All right. Bear with us while we get back in our seats here. Okay, we're gonna, I'm going to go ahead and, uh, call the meeting to order, um, and take roll call real quick. We had Councilmember Cargill.
Present.
Councilmember Kurtz.
Present.
Councilmember Van Orman.
Here.
Council, uh, Mayor Pro Tim Follier.
Here.
Councilmember Spencer.
Present.
Councilmember Dunn.
Happy to be here.
And Councilmember Salberg.
There.
All right. We're going to do agenda approval. Mayor Pro Tim.
Uh, yes, thank you very, just have, uh, one amendment to make, and that is to add executive session for RCW forty-two, thirty-one, ten, one, uh, dash.
For potential litigation.
Litigation. Yes, sorry.
That's okay. We have a second to add that to. All right. We, we have a second from Councilmember Spencer to add executive session.
I have no other amendments unless anybody else does.
And we'll get this one, get this one approved. We have a, um, we'll take the all in favor of adding the executive session, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Well, guys, add the executive session.
No others. Then I'll make a motion to approve the amend, amend. We just approved the amendment.
Yeah, approve the amended agenda.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve the amended agenda.
Second.
Second from Councilmember Salt Salberg. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Motion passes. We've got an agenda. All right. Um, we're going to open up for citizen comments. Um, remember, okay, I've got a few here. Um, so for those of you in the council chambers who'd like to make a comment, we have our little yellow half sheets, um, next to the door over here. If you could please fill that out. Um, and then anybody online who'd like to make a comment, please shoot a message to our meeting host in chat and he will get my attention. Don't post your question. You can ask that during, during your time. So just to remind everybody, you've got a three-minute time limit. Um, we've got the timer up on the screens and for those of you online, it is on, on your, your Zoom screen as well. So we're going to go ahead and, um, introduce yourself and let us know if you are a city resident and then you'll have your three minutes. So first we have Joy Moore.
So tonight, many of us are making, oh, sorry. Thank you. I'm Joy Moore, two zero one five three Glenbrook Avenue. Um, tonight, many of us are making comment on things that are not on your agenda. Um, we're commenting on the River District Zone change. Um, we just had a public hearing about this and we wanted to bring it to light to the council um, before it comes up for a vote probably in December. So, um, we just want to say we would like to keep the River District residential, um, so that we continue to have the protection of the city. Um, at this point, Mr. Frank is saying that he wants to hold events and continue expanding the farm um, without having to ask permission of the city to have a permit. We were able to go to the city and have a hearing regarding the storage containers, um, that are not permitted by the city. Um, if this were open zone that he wants to change it to, we would have no recourse. Um, Mr. Frank doesn't have carte blanche to do what he wants with these zones. He did request a zone change in March of twenty twenty-two in the fourteen-acre technology center at Multer End Mission. He promised the city would, he would have, quote, mixed-use housing, retail and walking paths. A month after the city granted him this zone change, he sold two of the parcels to another developer who slapped, is going to slap up apartment complexes. He's currently promising to do activities in the River District Parks, which are already permitted uses. If given open zone, we have no city protection. Um, if he pulls a bait and switch like he did at the, um, Meadowwood Technology Center. According to the Journal of Business, July twentieth, twenty twenty-three, there are plans to expand this to an industrial agricultural business. They are already washing, processing and storing vegetables in this area. They have a nine hundred square foot greenhouse, which is by definition industrial size, not something that would be permitted in a small-scale orchard, vineyard or community garden. In this article, the grower states that they want to add, um, selling honey from a local bee cup, beekeeper and Lucky Lady Bread Company's bread products to sell at the farm store. Um, so this is not just a cute little farm stand. This is a business. Under the current zone and quote, new agriculture actively farmed uses are not permitted, unquote. As Joe Mann in the Planning Commission stated, this will come back to bite us if the open zone is permitted. He says, we will see the expansion of.
Okay, I, I, your time's up. I'm sorry. We're going to have to ask you to stop.
Okay.
Thank you for coming. Really appreciate it. Um, next up, we have Robin Beckett.
Hello.
Hi.
Good evening, and name is Robin Beckett, all Liberty Lake, and I am here to talk also about the River District Zone Change. I want to talk about the comments and reactions really that the city has received. I believe they're symptoms of possibly not the best design, planning, or if it's public participation and what do you have the perfect storm. So I want to talk about the concerns, their cumulative impacts caused from this, what I note as commercial agricultural business. And I want to put some things in perspective for you on the impacts. Hundred-foot-long hoop house, length of a basketball court, twelve-hundred-square-foot hoop house, size of a small house, nine hundred and forty-five-square-foot greenhouse, size of a double-car garage, two four-foot-square-foot fans on the front and back of the greenhouse. Well, that equates to the noise of two air conditioners going full blast twenty-four-seven during the summer. Market stores, the footprint size of a single-car-plus garage, storage containers actually have the size capacity similar to a U-Haul moving truck. You have pedestrian bicycle trail being used to haul products to and from the store because of harvest to serve three hundred customers. And then you have the waste pile, give you some perspective. So these things, because of the threshold of the CEP, we required no CEP review. And really, so what you have is I put in my notes, it's just the focus is really, um, this is with its own change for the River District. And I've composed a couple of documents, filed them on record. I hope that the city council reads those. They're sort of luminous, so I'm worried. Um, current RDR already has. I, I don't believe it even has enough restrictions for this currently, because you see what's happened. And so now the open space zone is going to have, it'll have a few more setbacks, I guess, and some height variations, but really in this one, now storage containers will be considered as permitted uses. So I wanted to make everybody aware, ninety percent of the open space change request, it's focused on agricultural uses. And that was pretty easy to figure out, just count how many asks that he wants and go, wow, a lot of these are all agriculture. Not too many really exist on your criteria of the open space, sensitive areas, natural areas, parks in those items. With that, I'll conclude.
Thank you very much. All right. Next, Renee DeFranzo.
Good evening. My name is Renee DeFranzo. My address is two zero one zero five Glenbrook Avenue. The area behind my home is the Powerline Trail Greenway. Its main function is a pedestrian and bicycle connection to the Spokane River Trail. In the last few years, the Greenway has been transformed into the farm at River District, quote-unquote, and agricultural business. This photo shows open space area to today. Behind a stormwater basin are metal shipping containers which have planting beds on both sides. The overall appearance is industrial, agricultural, and does not meet the high aesthetic standard for our city and community. Next slide, next please. The original vision for the Greenway was more community-oriented. It will have pathways and trails and community orchard benches, waters, pot, fountains and and trash receptacles. Sign is recognizing the cultural and agricultural history of the area. A large community orchard is planned within the Greenway. Next, next slide, please. How much of this vision was implemented? Not much. There's a doggy poop bag dispenser and one signpost with distance to cities and trails. Next slide, please. The picture on the left shows a view down the residential fences. The agricultural activity very close to backyard, about ten feet. The picture on the right shows the huge pile of garden waste dumped beside the community walking path. The public constantly uses this path. The smell, appearance and noise makes a negative app impact of public enjoyment. This agricultural business incompatible with residential areas. Next slide, please. The new RDO proposal implies a wider range of permitted activities, mobile food, sales and concessions, espresso stands and more. The table shows this, what is currently not permitted or permitted on a limited basis in Liberty Lake, open space zones, all of these items become fully permitted, fully permitted, and the proposal is approved. This land use need appropriate city review for infrastructure, access and safety features. Next slide, please. Has a Vista agreed to allow these expand to public uses? No, our area is windy, so all power lines of Vista objects to metal hoop, metal hoops who used in the window, windrow structures, which is a creates about a hundred, almost close to a hundred feet long, eight feet high. And thanks to Mr. Frank, he will allow two fifty-foot windmills, windrows, but directly behind my house, he's going to cut that in half, block it by my view and through my sliding glass door window. I will not be able to see anything. Who would pay for these improvements? The city, the land, the owner, the HOA, the business owner, where would they be located? For this reason, these reasons, I respectfully ask that the rezoning proposal not receive your approval. Thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you. Sorry, I was having trouble watching the clock. I was listening. Um, next, Bonnie Burns.
Good evening. Nice to see you all. When we talked about this a few weeks ago, one of the meetings, uh, Mr. Frank and his associate who helped design the farm stated that, oh, I live at Glenbrook Avenue in Liberty Lake, right behind the greenhouse. Haha. Um, uh, they, uh, stated that the, the farm would be a community farm, community as they actually stated on record for people who don't have backyards like we do. There's apartments, there's condos and households. They don't come with a backyard. This community farm would allow them to have a little plot of land, kind of like what they have at Kendall's Yard. So they can plant their tomatoes and their beans and their whatever they wanted. This is not happening. This is, we were never told that this farm was going to be industrial. We live with the smell. We live with the, the mess. We live with the noise. It's not conducive to a residential area. Making this open space gives him carte blanche to do what he wants. There's no fire hydrants. There's no bathrooms. There's no access or easy access fire trucks. It's not going to go what, drive down the trail? It's nothing but dirt. Um, it would be unsafe to hold uh, things like food trucks he wants to put out there for things and coffee stands. It's unsafe, unsanitary, and it's not in a residential neighborhood. This farm is industrial. They don't, they sell not only whatever vegetables they grow and clean and maintain that we have to witness and live with. They sell other items too. The farm doesn't grow bread. All right. Um, uh, so you don't put this in the middle of the area. He's already designed a beautiful commu- uh, area for for commerce. There's restaurants and a daycare center. It's very pretty. It's situated nicely. There's parking. Everything like that across from the beautiful park that he has there that they're putting up the lights for the holidays for. But this industrial farm should never, ever have been started there, especially when they never even asked us. We basically got a knock-knock on the door. We're going to put a small little farm, a small greenhouse, won't even notice it practically. Maybe you'll hear kids from the school coming to learn how their food is sourced. Guess what? I haven't seen one class come by for the last two years. I have a big greenhouse behind me and all I am is living behind what is to me an industrial or huge community farm. And it's not very pretty. So I hope you to consider not to give him open space and make it even worse for us. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. All right. Betty Zerba.
Can I have these out real quick?
Um, we just, um, started at the end, we'll pass them down.
Okay.
All right, let's go. So my name is Betty Zerba. I live at two zero one seven nine behind the, uh, greenhouse as well. So after several months of hearings with the Planning Commission and meetings with area residents, I recommend that you disapprove the forthcoming request from the Planning Commission to approve Greenstone's proposal to change the zoning of the River District and the Proposal to change the zoning of the River District and the four parks and farm. As we have learned, Greenstone's request for this change was primarily to build out the farm as a commercial entity. And and sell it as a community farm. And be able to place buildings and other commercial operations such as a coffee stand on this large green space to the west of the power lines. The farm is not a community garden, nor is it accessible to residents unless they want to pay six hundred dollars for the season. For a weekly bag of vegetables. Further, changing the zoning to open space for the farm, the three established parks and the planned park. Would mean Greenstone would have carte blanche to build buildings in these locations. But in a, in a farm or commercial, uh, retail enterprises. At the last Planning Commission meeting, we learned that the current residential zoning allows the farm to operate as is. However, the city of Liberty Lake does not allow still cargo containers, which, um, are are going to be removed, as I understand. Greenstone is removing these. My question is. Why do we need to change the zoning to open space when the current residential zoning currently allows for the farm to operate? There is no need to change the zoning. Greenstone wants this change to open space to take over these parks and the farm to do whatever he wants. The current zoning is working. I appeal to you not to approve the zoning change. That can't, that can't be undone. The residents will have no voice, no recourse and no help from the city of Liberty Lake. Finally, during the Planning Commission meeting, some commissioners wanted to put guardrails on what would not be allowed in open space. And I've I've printed out a few of these things because I'm running out of time. Specifically, the farm. The meeting lasted three hours and I believe they were worn out and just approved the recommendation to change the zoning to open space to end the meeting. I wish that they would have had continued to discuss those guardrails. If you approve the zoning change, I would like you to consider the following rules to be applied and enforced by the city of Liberty Lake. And you have them here. I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Good timing. All right, and last in person that I have is Cynthia. And I know Cynthia, I'm going to screw up how to say your last name. Goodness. Thanks.
Uh, Godinas.
Goodness, thank you.
All right, so, um, they have all said so much, and I don't want to take anybody's more time. These ladies have been sitting here for a long time waiting. Um, I just wanted to share from my perspective, the first time I walked down that path and I could hear how loud. That noise was, and I thought to myself, how awful for the people that were living there. Um, I I don't even live over there. So. What I would like to just share is my thoughts are, you know, it it. It is very obvious there's an, there's a hope to grow this farm. And the farm is allowed to be the way it is as it is. So I also agree, why are we changing the zone unless we want to grow the farm? Um, if we want to have events where you can, you know, not have permits and and maybe you can do that once a week or twice a week, or who really knows? Saying, I don't think he's going to put the farm on Pathman Park, but I don't think they're going to grow it up on the other part is different than knowing. So whatever you do decide to do, please make sure that you know what the plan is going forward. Are we growing this farm? Most people don't want to do that. I feel like it separates us. We have a wonderful farmer's market. I like to go to this side of the community where everybody else is to see my friends and my and family. And if we have this other farm over here, we're separating ourselves. I feel like when we did the bridge, that was the idea was to commute like bridge the community. And this kind of separates, it puts us over here and you can subscribe and you can you get your food over here or you can do this over here. So. That's about all I have. I don't want to take up any more time, but I'm not in favor of changing the zone.
Thank you, everybody for for speaking. Um, there's one more check, nothing on, nobody online? All right, so we will move on from citizen comments. Lost my agenda. Um, all right, so we are up to announcements, proclamations and special presentations. So thank you, ladies, for being so unbelievably patient. Um, I do want to introduce all of you, and then I'm going to ask, um, Brian Newberry, your your fearless leader over here to say a few words before we, uh, we read the proclamation. So if you guys wouldn't mind standing up one more time, I want to introduce you as kind of wave as I call your name. If you want to, um, turn to the audience, you can do that. So we have Aleah. Hey, welcome, Colby. Danica. Grace. Kayden. Laura. Okay, Liza. Lisa, I'm sorry. I think I messed that up last year too, didn't I? I will get it right next year and you're back. I apologize. Paige. And Tuesday, my neighbor. All right. Well, thank you again, you guys for being here. We really appreciate it and having been a former girl. I guess, is it once yours, Girl Scout, you're always a Girl Scout? Okay, so. So having been done that myself, um, I I salute you. And so we're going to ask Brian to say a few words and then we'll do the proclamation.
Hi, thank you, Mayor, distinguished Liberty Lake City Council, Senator Patton. Shout out to Senator Patton for all the work he did to put together a joint, um, military law enforcement center out there on the West Plains. Incredible leadership by him, but thank you all for having our Girl Scouts tonight. We've done about fifteen celebrations with, uh, city councils. I'm going to be out in Wenatchee tomorrow night doing the same thing. We're celebrating the day of the girl, which was actually in October. But I wanted to, the mayor agreed to push this back by a few weeks because I just wanted to say a few words to you all about veterans in our country. But, um, girls, we have never done a flag ceremony as long as I've done this. So Liberty Lake, thank you for setting the bar high. I appreciate it very much with a name like Liberty Lake. You love America. You certainly do. So, girls, you did a great job. Can we have a round of applause for our Girl Scouts? Thank you. So yeah, the leaders did this here and on the fly, and I appreciate it very much. I was just bursting out there. I'm, uh, just in pride with you, Girl Scouts. So it was the day of the girl, eleven years ago, the United Nations came along and said, you know what, girls? You you all have a voice in this world and we also need to listen to you. And you're going to make the world a better place, and that's what we celebrated back in October, and we're celebrating that here tonight for you. We, as a council, hit four thousand girls this year. That's the most girls we've had since two thousand thirteen. And I think for all of you understanding, membership organizations are under assault these days. That's good news because when we have girls like this in the audience, um, we are making the world a better place. And girls, uh, listening to that, uh, great comment. So thank you, citizens, for just giving us a few minutes here, listening to that great comment. You have full credit for your democracy badge, for listening, for listening to our community in action there. That was a, that was a great, that was a great thing there. So good jobs, girls, so. You're, you're just hitting it. Flag ceremony, public comment, girls, you're just rocking it tonight. Let me just finish up with just a couple of comments about America. Thank you, Mayor, for letting me do this. My night, you all meet on the same night I meet with my troops, so it's hard for me to come be here. But I was base commander ten years ago and we lost shell seven, seven in twenty thirteen. And I was the base commander out Fairchild. I was one of the most significant aircraft accidents we've had here recently in the Air Force when we lost a tanker overseas. I just wanted to come on the ten year anniversary. We had that here in May. Um, and as I was sitting out there thinking, I just so appreciate this community for all that you did. Because you were the first community that came together and wanted to recognize one of my airmen. So you have here in your, um, a course out here, you have, uh, Captain Tori Pickney, who is out there in your park there. And you know what? I've always said, when you lose someone, if you keep saying their name, you'll never forget them and they'll never die. And I just wanted to just personally come as a former base commander and celebrate you all for being patriots, for loving this country and for what you did to re- recognize my airmen. So God bless Liberty Lake for all that you do and God bless Girl Scouts for, you know what, girls? You make the world a better place. And so as I, as we depart the stage here, I feel awful for the male council members. Because I normally make you feel included because I bring you cookies. I totally forgot. But fortunately, my lead co-leaders back here know the mayor. So here in the next couple of weeks, you're going to have cookies show up in this vicinity here for you all to celebrate. So I will remember you, but tonight I won't forget the the ladies here. So as I go on by the ladies here, I give you my brand new patch. It says that you rock because once a Girl Scout, always a Girl Scout and you always rock. But for you, mayor here, I just want to give you this American scarf here. Um, I became the owner, I bought all the scarves here when these went on clearance from Girl Scouts USA. Um, so I now I'm the proud owner of, I used to have six hundred scarves, but I'm down to about a hundred and fifty. But I just wanted to give this to you for you to remember that as a Girl Scout, you definitely make our country stronger. And that democracy and liberty will never go away as long as we have Liberty Lake on the watch. God bless you all. Thank you.
Okay, so one more formality. We have our proclamation. We're going to have Kelsey go ahead and read it. And then we'll take a quick vote of support and then I'll sign it for you guys and send you home with the signed copy.
This is declaring October eleventh, twenty twenty-three as International Day of the Girl. Whereas October eleventh, two thousand twenty-three marks eleven years since the United Nations adopted Resolution sixty-six one seventy to declare October eleventh. As the International Day of the Girl to recognize girls' rights and the unique challenges girls face around the world. And whereas, as the world's premier leadership development organization for girls. Girl Scouts has emphasized public service, civic engagement and fostering a sense of community in girls for over a century. And whereas, Girl Scouts works to champion the ambitions, cultivate the talents and develop the skills of girls to be leaders in the, in their own world and in ours. And whereas, in these incredibly challenging times, Girl Scouts provides community, consistency and connection for girls. And is a safe haven in all of the uncertainty. And whereas, despite the worldwide pandemic recently, Girl Scouts in this council adapted and overcame to grow four thousand girls last month. The most since two thousand thirteen and vow to continue growing to provide girls optimism and adventure. And whereas, Girl Scouts offers girls twenty-first century programming in science, technology, engineering and math, or STEM. The outdoors, entrepreneurship and beyond, helping girls develop invaluable life skills. And whereas, the International Day of the Girl focuses attention on the need to address the challenge girls face, including poverty. And to promote girls empowerment and the rightful fulfillment of their human rights. And whereas, today on the eleventh anniversary of celebrating the specialness of girls. We are reminded more than fifty million women are Girl Scout alums as role models to the one point seven million Girl Scouts. And we recognize and honor the one point one billion girls across the globe. We make the world a better place.
All right, do we have a motion in the council to, uh, to to approve this proclamation?
Move to approve.
I have a motion to approve by Councilmember Dunn.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Van Norman. All in favor of approving this proclamation, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, now therefore, we, Mayor, Mayor and council members of the city of Liberty Lake. Do hereby proclaim October eleventh, twenty twenty-three as International Day of the Girl in the city of Liberty Lake, Washington. I will get this signed, make it official. All right, thank you, ladies.
Thank you, Ben. The best part is, is I hear in this in a metal and we hang this up on the wall. And then girls, you know who gets to keep the original copy? You do. Thank you all.
All right, now on to our special presentation. Senator Patton is here to join us. Thank you for for taking time out of your very busy schedule, um, to, uh, give us an update and what's coming in the legislature and. All all things in your world.
All right, I'll try and keep it relatively short because I see you've got a full agenda tonight. Uh, and it's great to be here in Liberty Lake. I I did want to mention that. And just a little while ago, the Census Bureau, uh, came out with updated census figures from the last sense of three years into the new decade. And, uh, the fourth legislative district, uh, was the fastest growing district in Spokane County. And the second fastest growing in all of Eastern Washington. And thank you, Liberty Lake, for doing your part in that, uh, that and and hopefully, uh, as you can see. Uh, with the issues you had on the comments, uh, growth does not come without, uh, concerns. All I, all I can say about that is I'm glad those decisions, or I believe those decisions should be made locally, not in Olympia for you. So anyway, I, uh, wanted to mention a couple of things. In the last capital budget, we got money in for appraisals. For the property that the Department of Natural Resource owns next to George Gee. Uh, as a possible site to move the Army National Guard from, uh, the Spokane International Airport area. So there's going to be appraisal of that property out at the airport, which is already owned by the guard. And the property here owned by D N R. That money is, uh, school trust land, so you can't just trade it or give it away. Uh, there would have to be value, uh, given for that land, but we feel. Land out at the airport is worth quite a bit more and could help. In any event, we got a little progress report. They have proceeded on the appraisal. We put a proviso in there that they have a December first deadline. They've told us. Mr. Constantine is the legislative liaison for D N R that they will meet that deadline. So we should have an update for you, uh, on on that. The other thing I will, I'm on the Senate Transportation Committee. And I was happy to be out here. It was a great day, and so many of you were there for the Kramer Expressway dedication. Uh, sometime I'd be interested to know, I I drive by, see all these cars, not too many golf carts, but mainly cars going over the, uh, expressways. So it'd be interesting if you keep a total of how how busy that is. I assume you you do, and it's so great for. The fire department and others and all those on the north side of I ninety. So, uh, that that's great, uh, that that's happened. Uh, we are keeping in front of the committee, the idea of an additional lane on I ninety. I believe even when it happens, and I hope it does happen, probably a two-phase deal and go from Barker to Harvard and then Harvard to the state line. And of course, once you get to state line, they already got it. They got that extra lane over in Idaho. So, uh, those are there. There's a lot going on. The session starts January eighth. It's the sixty day session. Uh, but it'll be busy. Uh. The legislature does have some unexpected money, as much as I would like to see some of that go back to the taxpayer. I don't think the majority party is going to do that. So, uh, uh, and and that money is from the, uh, cap and trade. Uh, the extra money over three times what they estimated with the auctions and everything. And the other is the capital gains income taxes brought in way more money. So we'll, we'll see, uh, it's, uh, good news for the schools if they need school construction fund. Because some of that money has to go for for that purpose. But a couple of bills, uh, just a couple I'm working on, there's more and, uh, but one is we, and thank you for your support last year. On on the bill to make it easier and less expensive for people to own condominiums. It's a very limited bill. They have to be, uh, no more than two stories and twelve units. Uh. But it reduces the cost of those from fifty to seventy-five thousand dollars per unit. And, uh, based on the theory, uh, that these are again more to larger houses, the construction techniques have proven. And that, uh, uh, standards ought to be the same as a townhouse or, uh, and in any event, they are. Are going to be built. I understand some will be built out here and some will be built in other parts of the state. I hope some are built in the city of Spokane Valley also. So, uh, I'm, I'm going to try and tweak tweak that bill a little bit to say you could have three stories, not for additional units. But for parking, uh, some of the places would like underground parking or whatever. Or you could have a, a retail, uh, nobody be required, but you could have, you could have three levels rather than two. But there still would be just two for other residential units. Uh, so, um, and then another bill that's kind of come up unexpectedly, and you never. You never know what you're going to face when you sign up for this job, just like you guys never know what issue is going to come before you that you least expect. I remember when I was in the house, the big issue was, uh, the whistle free train zones over on Trent. And, uh, we finally got it through. Took a lot of years, maybe some of the old timers remember Tony Lasanis. Tony pushed it. He's a Greek immigrant and and he really took to heart being an American citizen and going to the, all levels of government. And and please, but anyway, we finally got it through. And then the, uh, lady of the other party was chair of the Transportation Committee. Uh, right when I left the house, I got up and said, you know. If we knew all it took was to get you to leave Patton, we would have passed that whistle free train zone years ago. So, any, anyway, but, uh, uh, the one issue that's come up and you guys, everybody experienced it this past weekend. You know, spring forward, fall back. You know, spring forward, fall back. The legislature four years ago passed a bill that Representative Ruchelli authored, passed unanimously, to go to year-round daylight savings time. The kicker was that Congress had to approve it, or the US Senate approved it right away, but we've been waiting four years. And from what I understand, there just isn't, isn't the support in the House to pass that. So we can adopt on our own without having to get permission of the federal government to go to year-round standard time. So that's what we're gonna try and do. I'm sure it'll be a bipartisan deal. You might prefer daylight over standard, but the thing is, the real choice is, you know, spring forward, fall back, you know, switch, switch twice a year for who knows how long, or go to a standard time, which Arizona and Hawaii have. And we've got legislators from Oregon and California that are also gonna introduce this. And we'll see, see what happens. I heard Representative Ruchelli on a TV interview the other day saying that maybe it's time to look at this. It's been four years and no real prospect. So those are a couple of things. The capital budget is always interesting. I always wanna talk to you, and I'm sure I will, Mayor, or anybody else on your agenda for the legislature. With the redistricting, we have a great ally in Cinderg Schessler, who is the Republican ranking member on the capital budget. And as you students of state government know, it requires a 60% vote to pass the capital budget. So they almost always are a bipartisan event. And Cinderg Schessler's been a good friend of mine, but also now that he represents everything east of the city and south of the city, he's got a big interest in what goes on here in Liberty Lake. I'm available. If any of you ever wanna talk or call me, I know I interact with a number of you from time to time. And even some of the old timers that I guess are gonna be joining you, interacting with. I said he was part of the youth movement coming back to the Liberty Lake. So anyhow, but I always like to be here. Liberty Lake's a great area. I saw your sales tax revenue was up, what, over 20%? Amazing. That's amazing. So and it's a, it's a great place to live, great place. A lot of people like to work. And corresponding problems come along with it, but that's what you're here for. So anyway, thanks very much. It's always a pleasure to be out here.
We really appreciate you taking time to be here tonight. All right. Okay. All right. We are up to our reports and inquiries section. We'll start with city councils. Any have any reports from city council? Councilmember Dunn?
Yeah, I'll take an update for Spokane Transit Authority. So Connect 2035 is the name of the strategic objectives that the Spokane Transit is seeking to plan and project for for upcoming services, long-term planning, I'll say. And within that, there was a consultant group that had provided some observations, analysis of existing service levels. And then I'd say potential opportunities, and especially some really innovative concepts. Other jurisdictions have introduced a novel concept referred to as microtransit, in which imagine the last mile is the challenge from transit endpoints like Liberty Lake Park and Ride, that it's an opportunity for me to take a bus from someplace else into Liberty Lake, but I really have to get about a mile from that park and ride. Envision for a moment, something of an Uber-like application in which a car, we'll call it, would be able to take three to four people from that park and ride within a defined zone, perhaps one to two miles within a radius of an end endpoint for transit. This has the potential to increase ridership and has been demonstrated successful in several jurisdictions. There's possibility STA may introduce a pilot location TBD. The City Line Ridership is up. That's the number one bus that takes you from Spokane Community College through Brown's Edition. Ridership exceeds expectations. Just for a review, that project completed this summer was on time and under budget. Substantial funds were transferred in a capital project from the City Line to the upcoming project referred to as the Division BRT. Bus rapid transit is the concept. What has been proven time and time again is that if there is a stop over there, and I don't have to know the schedule, but I know that there'll be a bus by at least every 10 minutes, it increases ridership substantially. So STA has objectives to create that from the Spokane, I'm gonna say the Plaza downtown through Hawthorne Road along Division. The only way that that could be present is upon the opening of the North Spokane Corridor. So given that North Spokane Corridor frees up traffic space along Division, consider potentially a right turn and bus-only lane lining both sides, allowing that level of service 10 minutes or less to each stop from the north. I'll call it, like I say, Hawthorne Road beyond the Y to the plaza. It's a long-term objective and is not yet fully funded through grants and other applications, but that's the big project I'd say that STA wants to follow up with from the success with the City Line.
Great report. Thank you very much. Anybody else from city council? Councilmember Salberg?
Thank you. As has been referenced earlier tonight, I did attend the November 2nd public hearing on the rezoning of the River District. And I just spoke with our city administrator, and he's gonna be looking for citizens and for city council. I encourage you to listen to the WebEx recording of that. There's an awful lot of issues, unless you want to have a four-hour meeting, coming in prepared to deal with those issues. There was a lot of, that you'll hear from the hearing examiner, too. And I'm hoping that pretty soon we'll have a result on that, but Mark's gonna look into that.
Okay, great. Laces on your head, too. I just wanna make sure since there's a public hearing coming up, where it's okay to listen to the meeting?
Yes.
Okay. Great. That was what I was getting to. So great. Thank you.
That's why I went.
Yeah, I just like to make sure. All right. Anybody else? Before I put Councilmember Van Orman on the spot, I missed the bed races last week, though I know Councilmember Spencer and I had an opportunity a couple weeks ago to help put some together. How did it go?
Went amazing. Matter of fact, there's some bedding over here, but I've got a whole car, which I'm hoping I locked my car. It is packed. From Liberty Launch Academy did a fabulous job. We made 40 beds that day for those that came out to build them. And the previous, at the beginning of October, we had another one out lows. So a total of 75 beds will be delivered to the fire victims. So that's pretty amazing. Thanks for asking. Thanks for coming out. That was awesome.
Probably. I was really disappointed I couldn't make it last Saturday, but good to hear. All right. Sign me up for next year.
Gotcha.
All right. Anybody else, Councilmember Salberg?
And just a reminder for everybody that we're still putting up winter glow actively right now, regardless of how much rain we've been getting. And so we can use as many volunteers as we can. We're doing a lot of work this weekend. If you want to volunteer, Mark Sabbath is sitting right there, and please get in touch with him. And he'll set you up, but we need as many people as we can for the next, if we're gonna hit our deadline of opening up the 18th.
Thanks for the reminder. Okay, I'll make my mayor's report pretty quick. Visit Spokane Board Meeting, Transportation Summit that Mark and I attended. That was very interesting on the future of electric vehicles and some of the interesting things that they're doing with that, to try to move that along. City Academy started, I think tomorrow is what, our fourth class of the session already? Lots of GSI legislative agenda meetings. We've also been meeting about the GSI Regional Advocacy Committee meeting. So we're kind of shifting from an old format to a newer format, which I think is gonna be more successful. Chamber Board was last, last, last week. We did have the opening, grand opening for TT's barbecue and brewery over in the River District. So if you guys haven't been there yet, hit it up. Their food is amazing, and I didn't have their fries the first night I went, but I was able to have them at the ribbon cutting, and they're, I mean, I would just go just for the fries even, but everything's really good. So, so please support our local businesses. We had a couple interviews for Parks and Arts members. So we have, I think, the two of the last three meetings, I think, have been canceled due to lack of quorum. Historically, we have had a place for two adjunct members. So we will be bringing forward these two people that we interviewed at, probably the meeting on the 21st for confirmation for their appointment to a couple of the adjunct positions. And tonight later, we will be appointing our student representative for Parks and Arts. We also had PD interviews in anticipation of budget approval for 2024. To add to, we were very clear that the budget hadn't gone, hadn't gone through yet, but we're proceeding so that if you, you all do approve adding the two new officers for 2024, they will be ready to hit the pavement beginning of the year. I did attend, I was the only one from the Administrative Committee for SRTC, imagine that, that attended the exit conference for their audits. It was very short, no findings. And on top of it, they apparently lost access to their accounting system for a couple months, and they were still able to pull everything together and fast and get through the audit and follow the trails with the auditors, and they did really well. So know that our money and our projects with the SRTC are in really good hands, and they do a really good job with their record-keeping. And aside from that, unfortunately, I missed the GSI economic forecast this morning. When I got up, there was ice on the roads, and I didn't have the four-wheel drive vehicle. So I will catch up on that with a couple people who went and see how it did. That concludes my report, and we're up for Mark.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. So diving right in here, looking at events and reminders coming up over the next couple of weeks. The Leaf and Beach drop-off is continuing through December 1st. We talked about this before. That's, you have any yard waste and bags, take it over to the Liberty Lake Sewer and Water District Reclamation Facility up off of Harvard, and you can leave it there. City Academy, the mayor mentioned that. We are tomorrow night on our fourth session. And we do have registered enrollees, but we have enough space. We're having it at Trailhead this session, and so there's plenty of space if individuals want to come to certain sessions just to hear that particular topic, if you have an interest in that topic. And so tomorrow night's is the budget. And so every once in a while, we, we plan these things so that they kind of coincide. And so this is an example of that. So we're gonna be spending two hours tomorrow night talking about the budget, how it's put together, how we use it to make decisions, those kinds of things, 6 o'clock at Trailhead. And then the following week is going to be the Public Works and Library presentation. So if you're interested in any of those topics, come out and join us. The Veterans Day holiday is going to, we're going to observe that on November the 10th, which is Friday, so City Hall and Library will be closed. And as Councilmember Salberg mentioned just a minute ago, the Winter Glow Spectacular lights up on November the 18th out at Orchard Park. And if you're interested in making sure that happens, be sure to see Mark about volunteering. And then we still have another meeting in between now and this, but just as an early reminder, the Thanksgiving holiday will be observing on November 23rd and 24th. So then City Hall and Library will be closed. And so any questions about events and reminders? All right. Let's roll into the agenda, and we've got a donation report, and I will turn the mic over to Kelsey.
Thank you, Mark. Mayor and council, just a quick opportunity to provide you with the donation update for the third quarter. In addition to some treats at both City Hall and PD, we had a donation for monetary donation towards the Fourth of July fireworks. Also monetary donation to the library in addition to some books, and then the student labor for the Orchard Park Story Walk. And unless you have any questions, I'll pass it back to Mark.
Okay, moving along. We are entering that season where we're gonna start seeing some changes. And in fact, Kyle mentioned in his quarter three financial report an item on the agenda regarding snow removal supplies. And so with that, I'm gonna turn the floor over to both Jen Cap and Camp, sorry, and Derek Cosenkew to give council a winter operations update. Jen, Derek?
Yeah, I'm here. So we're just kind of sitting and waiting in the wings right now, shifting over from summer season, fall season wrap-up, and over to winter. As far as our trails go, we're ready to go. Remember that we do plow our trails by priority. And those priorities start with walking routes to school. They, including the Valley Way Hill up by the Frog Bench, those are, those are pretty critical areas for kids to get to school. We plow bus stops and intersections and pedestrian crossings. So in the event that we do get a heavy snow event, they will continually plow those until they are caught up before they move on to some of the other areas of trail. So if there's a trail that seems like it's not getting plowed, the example being down by Trailhead Golf Course, sometimes that one gets left to the, to the last resort. We do, we do have a priority system that we plow by. And then I'll, I'll turn it over to Derek for the street side. Derek, you're on mute.
Thank you, Jen. So for streets, we are, we're all geared up. We've gone through our equipment. We're all set and ready for any storms that come this way. Have looked into the weather and do not see anything coming up for the least the next two to three weeks. Once snow does start, we will be ready with residential's and main roads. Obviously, plowing main roads first and then moving into residential's. As snow continues to fall, we will continue to stay in main roads and then continue to move into residential's as the snow subsides.
Are there any questions?
Jen, could you provide just a quick update with respect to the parks and the restrooms and all of the equipment?
Oh, the winterization. Yeah. So, so like I said, with the wrap-up of the summer season, we've blown out irrigation systems, which means all of our parks, restrooms, and facilities, splash pads, water fountains are all off for the season. We do have portable restrooms in the parks to get us through the winter, but we don't have heated areas to be able to leave restrooms and those facilities open. So everything is shut down. Parks are still getting used pretty heavily. But yeah, we don't have access to those facilities now until spring.
Any questions?
I've actually got a quick question. Hey, Derek, inevitably, we always hear things through various sources, whether I'm getting text messages or Facebook messages or whatever. What's the best way that you would like to see the community communicate any problem intersections? Because I know you can't be everywhere all the time.
So I believe that if you go to our website, the City of Liberty Lake, that you can input any information that you have. And Jen, could you correct me on that if I'm wrong?
Yeah, there's a, there's a form you can fill out online. It may not hit staff until working business hours. You know, we do monitor Facebook. It's a little bit more than we normally do after hours just for snow situations. So we often will see people on Facebook, if they could post on the city's Facebook page, that, that will be monitored after hours for snow. Using the example that the roundabouts often get icy, and that can creep up pretty quickly. So we'll see a comment on Facebook. So the city Facebook page is fairly rapid. They can use Text My Gov. But again, that may not, they may, we may not see that as staff until the next day. But our crews try to be proactive. We know the messy areas and the dicey areas that come up first, and they make those their priorities. So we really do try to stay on top of that as best we can. But there are occasions that we need to go back and retreat. So probably Facebook is the easiest.
That's, that wasn't the, what I was expecting to hear. So I'm kind of glad I asked the question. And I know the PD is out all the time as well, so they'll be reporting. And Councilmember Salberg?
Just to be clear, we cannot post on the city Facebook page. So that's gonna have to be changed. You can go to the message portion, and if that's being monitored, you can do it, but you can't post directly to that page.
Oh, yeah, citizens. No, it's, yeah, you can't start one. But yeah, you can, you can use the messenger.
So the question still to Derek that you're, that we're asking is, what's the best way to get ahold of them if there's an emergency?
Yeah, message, the Facebook message. Thanks. All right. Anybody else? Thanks for the update, you guys.
All right. So before we move on, backing up one spot, just to give another event reminder, on November 17th and 18th, which is next Friday and Saturday, the Friends of Liberty Lake Library are having its fall book sale. So keep that in mind.
Another major fundraiser for them.
Yeah. All right. Moving on to a quick preview of priority-based budgeting. And so Jacob, if you could hit me up there, I would appreciate it. Okay. So I want to start this out and we're not going to spend a lot of time on this and and I'll explain that as we go through. But I want everybody to focus on the fact that this is a preview. So it's kind of like when you go to the movies and you see the trailer, that's not what you're going to see when it switches from the trailer to the movie. So we're not implementing this this year for the budget two thousand and twenty four that we're currently developing. We're introducing it now. We're giving you the preview now so that you can see some of the changes that will be forthcoming and that you will see incorporated in the process for two thousand and twenty five's budget development. But none of what you see here is going to be incorporated in the development for the two thousand and twenty four budget. So I just want to make that clear. So nobody's confused as a, wait a minute, why am I not seeing it in this format? Who do I ask questions? What's going on? This is just a preview to give you an idea and signal that there are some changes that are going to be happening with the budget process and the way that you're seeing information, interacting with the information. And we hope that those are positive changes. I'm going to talk about them a little bit here. So Jacob, if you could go to the next slide, please. So we, if if you remember, obviously, you remember, we we've been talking quite a bit about it. And Council is poised to consider the new strategic plan later this evening. It's on the agenda. And so the the planning process that we went through, that's kind of summarized over there on the right side, that ended up producing the plan that you're going to consider had its own worth. The process had a had a worth. There was a value associated with the process. But the plan itself, the document, is really only going to continue to add value if it's implemented. And so if if you look at some of the things that we, we're calling them artifacts, that were established in those phases, going back to March of twenty three, when the council had its first workshop, we talked a lot about finances and economic conditions and all of those other things that you see. And then when we entered the public engagement phase and we had all of the survey feedback, you see some of that. We had a strong agree agreement among the community respondents with the fact that financial sustainability was a core value. Strong agreement that community investment was a core value. And then you see the others rating there as a top five priority, which was a little bit different focus. And so some of the scoring was a little bit different, but but strong relationships between the survey respondents and those items that are financial engagement, investment related kinds of things. And then when we got back to the second council workshop in August of two thousand and twenty three, you you started to form the final document. We saw things like when we were talking about priorities and results, reducing debt, more transparency, better balance between revenues and expenses and on and on. And so those are some of the things that we have in mind that we want to make sure as we implement the plan are are preserved and we're focused on. And so one, once it's adopted, once the plan's adopted, how do we ensure that it's implemented to make sure that we're achieving those priorities results in in the plan's vision? Next slide, Jacob. And so really, the most effective way to do that on an ongoing basis is through the budget process. And so that's probably not a surprise. The 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 council and and this framed about the city council thing that's behind me here says in part that as the legislative body, the council, you establish local laws and policies and has general oversight and control over the city's finances primarily through the budget process. And as Kyle mentioned in the very first slide of his presentation earlier, the the budget serves as a policy document and it's probably the ultimate policy document. And so the best way to implement the strategic plan by far is through the budget. And so Council has an important role to play in making sure that the plan doesn't just sit on the shelf, right? That's not why we went through the planning process. That's not why we developed the new strategic plan. And so as you can see here, the budget is always nearest in time to now and closest to the most evidence and clarity. Because as you go up and out, things change. Conditions change. You know, who would have thought when you developed the plan that is in place now, that is set to expire at the end of December, that the pandemic would have happened, right? You you don't anticipate those kinds of things. And so the budget year over year is the best, most effective way to ensure that you're implementing the strategic plan. It's high impact. And so we want to make the budget process a tool for implementing the strategic plan and ensuring that those priorities are met and we're achieving the key result. And so in practice, what does that look like? On the left side, you see kind of a snapshot of our current proposed budget that's out on our website now. And that's really just an example. It's not important which list of line items it is. It's just important that it shows the current line item style of budget. And so this is a traditional model. It's organized by fund, department line item. Kyle talked about all of those different fund designations as he went through the the introduction earlier this evening. And so there are thousands of lines in the budget, cover hundreds of pages. And we'll go through that as we continue to develop the budget and go through those discussions. And so, for example, if you ask me right now or you ask anyone, what revenues and expenses are associated with, say, snow removal? We just talked about that with Derek earlier, or capital project management. And what's the public's return on that expense? It's going to be hard to answer that definitively. We can get an answer, but it's hard to answer that definitively in in the in the left side, the traditional side. If you ask me how to prioritize those expenses to support the strategic plan and its priorities and results, it would be a little bit even more challenging than than just asking about them. And so you can see the kind of the, I wouldn't call it a dilemma, but the challenge, the thing that we want to improve. And so by evolving to this priority based budgeting process, we're proposing to elevate the conversation out of the line item analysis into a program analysis, or shifting the way that we look at it. So instead of talking exclusively about line items that are incremental by nature, we we want to talk about the way that we're investing the public's money and with respect to programs. And so that's illustrated by this group of boxes on the right. This isn't complete. This is a representative sample. And so this will grow and develop as we go through the process of making those final inventory, program inventory decisions, right? And so a program is just a container. It 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 contains services, activities, resources and results. And so we can talk about those in a much more layman's way, right? I, everyone understands what payroll management is, or they should. They can read about it in the program description. We can have a conversation about what it should achieve, those kinds of things. And so the conversation really shifts from reviewing those thousands of line items with incremental changes to reviewing these programs with detailed information about activities, resources and results. Next slide. So just a couple of examples. And we talked about snow removal and capital project management, so we'll keep that theme. And so what what this will look like, and these aren't, this is real data, but it's not precise. So I don't want you to focus too much on the numbers of the total. It's just a representative kind of example of what this would look like. And so on the on the left there, you see snow removal. The result of that program is going to be, we're going to keep the streets and trails safely passable during snow events. It's specifically aligned to those priorities that we've defined in the strategic plan. And it can be aligned to one or more of them strongly or more strongly or more weakly than another, but it's aligned in some way. And then you see the resources that are allocated to that program to achieve it. You get a total and a number of FTE. And the most important thing about this is that we are able to track and report results. So the the, and we'll talk about it in a minute, the accountability is there. And so the real value really of of this process is that we get a chance collectively to to score every program against established criteria. And we get to tie it to our priorities that you've set through the strategic planning process. And we get to determine the priority. And so Phil, back to your question earlier, you know, what do we do if we're having to make these corrections and take immediate corrective action? How do we make those decisions? Well, part of that answer is we look at what we prioritize and we look at what's been allocated to our highest priorities and our lowest priorities. And we may be able to shuffle some of that allocation. And so then the the grouping of programs happens and we have a relative prioritization from high to low. Hence, the priority based budgeting. We're talking about funding our highest priorities. And that doesn't mean that we, you know, get to a point where we say, oh, we're not funding something. But what it does give us the chance to do is have that discussion. Do we want to put all of our resources into our highest priorities or do we want to make other decisions? But we're doing that on an informed, data driven, results oriented basis. Next slide, please. Just kind of a visual to leave you with. This hopefully helps put it in perspective. What what do we get for this? Why are we doing it? Is it just kind of an academic exercise? Why would we do this? So the 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 biggest value, one of the biggest values is that there's this ongoing planned, purposeful alignment between the strategic plan and the budget. And that's, and that's always there. It's always being nurtured and developed. And it's within the context of the proactive community engagement that has started based on your creation of the commission. And so that's kind of the backdrop. It helps put all of this together. And so what are some of the yields that we expect to see? Like I just mentioned, a results first perspective, we're we're looking at budget decisions that are able to be made on, based on community priorities. And the investment results can be visualized. We can keep track of them. They're observable. Accountability, the success of the plans measured by delivering on the key results that you've identified and 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 adopted. There's more transparency. The budget development process is easier and more understandable for more people. Allocations towards specific programs and priorities are clear. And then collaboration where community wide voices aid and reinforce decision making in both the strategic plan side and the budget side. Next slide, please. And so this is a real world example. Don't spend too much time on this. I've sent you this presentation. So if you want to take a look at this, you you can. If you want to go to the City of Flagstaff's website and look at this, you can. This is from the City of Flagstaff. They have a mature priority based budget program. And this is really just showing you what I just showed you, but in real life, they're actually doing this. Next slide, please. The real reason I wanted to point that out is because what this slide shows is what they're doing is on an annual basis. And I don't know which year this is, but whatever year it is, what what you can see here is they're making decisions to fund their highest priority things. The the programs that are of highest priority, they're funding more than the ones that are not. And so that's the decision that council gets to make. That's the conversation that we get to have on an annual basis as you, through the budget process, help us implement the strategic plan. And so finally, last slide, please. I I just want to leave you with a couple of thoughts. What this is and what it isn't. What what it is is a tool for effectively implementing the strategic plan. It's a proven method for allocating resources according to the community's priorities. And it's, it's already practically invoked by our financial policies. If you go into section twelve, ten and thirteen, ten, and you read those sections, it practically calls this out. We should be doing this. And then what it is not, right? It's it's not a rejection of the current method. It's, we're not going to be able to stop doing that, right? We have to continue to preserve the line item format because that's what our accounting system is based on. And and we don't want to affect that. We don't want to break all of these fund designations and other things that Kyle briefed you on earlier. It's not a magic solution. Implementing this isn't going to be an autopilot. We we have to develop it. We have to design it. We have to manage it. But if we do that, it will help us to implement and monitor the strategic plan and achieve those results. And it's, it's not bleeding edge. It's not something that is so far out there and novel that we're the only ones doing it. It's been implemented by over three hundred governments throughout the United States, local governments throughout the United States. It's been around for multiple years, more than a decade now. And it's recognized as a best practice by both GFOA, which is the Government Finance Officers Association, and the ICMA, which is the International City Managers Association. And so that's, that's a preview. That's, that's the minute and a half trailer that took me more than a minute and a half to give you, hopefully to get you wanting to go put your money on the barrelhead and see the movie. And so wrap up in questions before we move on.
Go ahead, Councilmember Cargo.
Thanks, Mark. I I love this type of budgeting that this is exactly what the state used to do with Governor Greg Warren, Governor Locke. So I'm I'm glad to see us moving in that direction. One question, and I'm not sure if we can put the graphic back up there. The one that had the, basically the budgeting tied to the strategic plan. I guess my question is, are we always, or at least in the in the short term, are we going to find a home of all the things that we have in the budget in the strategic plan or vice versa? And what if we don't? Then are we going to put them in like a miscellaneous category for now until we we figure out how to match the two?
That's a great question. And that's what we will learn. So this is an evolving process, right? It's not a perfect coming out of the gate. But when I mentioned us being able to have those conversations, as we go through and we establish those program definitions and inventories and we come back and we start allocating, we're going to find that we have some of those. And so then the question is, well, what do what do we do with them? We don't want to force them into a strategic priority just to have them in there. So what do we do with them? And that's a conversation we get to have.
And then I guess my second question is, is this something that takes council action? Or can we just adopt this going forward without council action?
So to to adopt the philosophy, there's no council action that needs to be taken. I'm I'm presenting it as a preview to signal that we're going to start thinking and doing some things differently. When we get into the budget review, you're going to see a change in one of the cost centers that I'm sure you'll have some questions about. So there are some purchases that, some procurement actions that have to occur later in the year as we get closer to implementation. And we'll explain those in detail as we get to them in the budget review. Yeah.
Thank you.
Great, thanks. Any other questions? It's Councilmember Glenn.
I'm starting my arms around the concept of programs and it's the litany or the inventory of those that I'm really interested in understanding more. So I guess that's a next stop or do I see it in the movie?
So I would be happy to give anyone a private screening, if you if you want to call it that. If we want to get together one on one and we can talk as detailed as you'd like. But in essence, what we're doing is we're defining everything that we do and we're finding a program home for it. So that we can say, here's the amount of money and resource that it takes to provide the service. And here's what result the community will see as from us doing that.
I'll raise that time.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, go ahead.
Oh, one more idea, Mark, that some of the other municipalities do. I think there was a few in Indiana, if I remember correctly, feedback this as well, is they let the citizens vote and update the priorities each and every year as well. Even though the strategic plan, obviously for us, is four years long, they allow the citizens to come in and, you know, they'll, they'll put something down at the, at the, at the community center or the grocery stores or wherever, and allow the citizens to actually take a little red dot or something and vote on their top priorities as well to help inform the the council. So I'm hoping we can maybe do something like that in the future.
I I saw Rob and you said red dot, put it on a thing. I saw. So as as you remember, on the strategic plan, each of our priorities has multiple results. And I think that's where that conversation happens on an annual basis so that we can keep those in tune with what the collective will is out there.
Any other questions, Phil? All right.
All right. So moving on, last item, the reason I put this on here is not to belabor the point, but I wanted to point out on the strategic plan that you have in front of you on on page two, which is the page titled City Profile. I just wanted to point out that there are a couple of fields on there that we won't know the answers to those things until we adopt the budget. And so you'll see some X placeholders. That isn't an oversight. That's, we we have to wait till the budget's adopted to know what the operating budget is and what the number of FTE is and those kinds of things. And so once the budget is adopted, those placeholders will be replaced with actual numbers. And so that's why those are there.
All right.
That concludes my report, Mayor.
We are up to Community Engagement Commission report.
My name is Mark Sabah. I'm on the CEC, known as the Community Engagement Commission. Before I get to my report, I need to take off my CEC hat, my winter glow hat. It's been mentioned tonight that we do need volunteers. Yep, we do need volunteers. So if you got a free hour, got a free six hours between now and the eighteenth, Between now and the eighteenth, you're welcome to come out. But I want to reiterate. We will open on the eighteenth at six o'clock over Heck or High Water. We have a special guest coming from the north. He wears red and that's where I'm going to leave it, coming to see us. So. But it's coming along, but the more people we can get out there would be really appreciated. Um, now to give you an update on the CEC, which, uh, stands for the Community Engagement Commission. Members of the Community Engagement, uh, in, uh, Community Engagement Commission assisted in expanding. And the collection of data during the city survey of the public's, uh, priorities for. Thirteen items of unfunded proposed project lists. The survey was available to the public through Zen City. From, uh, September twenty-fifth through the October thirtieth. The CEC supplemented online, uh, outreach by also distributing and collecting paper ballots. Uh, version of the survey during the farmer's market and. A couple of us went, uh, direct to have interaction, um. Meetings with the Kiwanis, the Friends of the Library and the Rotary. Um, the outline, uh, the online survey generated three hundred and sixty, uh, individuals that responded. Uh, the CEC helped boost its total response from, uh, going to the organizations. So total, we had over four hundred responses for it over a thirty-day period. Pretty darn good. Uh, results will be forthcoming. And it'll be fun to see because some of the things listed on there was, of course, a pool. The other thing was a dog park. And it goes on and on. So, um, if you looked, if you if you conducted, uh, the survey, you knew what was on there. Um, as part of the city's project to conduct a baseline survey early next year, this is for the first of the year and twenty-four. For the start of the Liberty Lake's new strategic plan, uh, the Community Engagement Subcommittee. Will be meeting with Mark, our city administrator, this Thursday to offer ways. That we can best connect with the residents to obtain, uh, the most, uh, strategically. Significant survey sample possible for this upcoming engagement of work. That'll be forthcoming later. And at our, uh, October meeting, the Community Engagement, uh, Commission began discussing the frameworks to help guide the group. In future community surveying and data gathering projects. Um, the initial idea for this is to establish criteria that the CEC must. Uh, could use in evaluating proposals for assistance in aligning proposals for, uh, the priorities of the city staff and the council. Processes, uh, for moving forward on this proposal and the systems to be used for improving, uh, community engagement. We are very, uh, we are still, uh, in the beginning stages of this, uh, project. Uh, we're determining what the framework will be eventually look like. We are working towards, uh, reporting this process, uh, of any ideas to you in the very, very near future. So I'm looking at this possibly as the first of the year. Um, just a little recap of, uh, Farmer's Market. This was, uh, honestly, the first full year. That the CEC was available to participate in the Farmer's Market. Uh, I would have to say. Help me, Robin. We were there every day. We had someone representing from the CEC every day for, uh, throughout the Farmer's Market. Every Saturday, yes. And, uh, it gave us. An opportunity, and I'm going to use this word again, to engage with people that came to our booth. I mean, uh, we were able to, uh, discuss little things like, um, you know, potholes. To, uh, big things like Kramer Overpass, when's it opening up, you know, and it was, it was really enlightening that. Myself, and I think Robin will have to attest to it because, you know, we were the majority of the time at the, uh, at the Farmer's Market. Uh, I learned a lot about what's happening with our city. And it and I learned it from talking to people coming to our booth. And it was very enlightening and I'm looking forward to next June when we open that thing back up. I'm going to be out there every Saturday that I can be able to make it. So, any questions? I like it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks very much. All right, next up Spokane Valley Fire Chief Soto.
Yeah.
I think he's hanging in the wall hanging. Hello?
Hello, could you be, Madam Mayor? Good evening, councilmembers, citizens. Uh, I will be reporting, uh, October twenty-three's run numbers. Uh, and this first page you can see this is just clearly our entire response area. It's a heat map. Just to kind of give you the indication of where the both of our calls are. Generally, you can see they're they're right around the opportunity neighborhood in Spokane Valley. So just. Little legend on the side there. Next slide, please. So for the month of October, we had just over twenty-one hundred calls. And this has been the, this is the second busiest month ever in our history that we've had, uh, call volume. Or have been tracking call volumes. So, uh, pretty significant. In fact, it's the fourth time we surpassed two thousand calls for a month. Uh, this year and for our total call volume is just over nineteen thousand. Of those calls, eighty-three percent are for EMS and of those eighty-three percent, roughly fifty-eight percent are for advanced life support calls. Next slide, please. Those, uh, twenty-one hundred calls generated just over twenty-five hundred responses. Of those responses year-to-date were just over twenty-five thousand. Of our engine companies, ladder companies, uh, front frontline units, APRAs that run. Uh, we had two units over three hundred calls. It one just short of of three hundred calls. So. Uh, again, just that whole opportunity area is quite busy. Year-to-date, we have. Uh, two units that are approaching three thousand calls and several others over two thousand. Next page, please. Uh, on the top, the top chart is showing. The amount of calls for the station locations. So you can see Station Eight and I apologize for the. Uh, the percentages, they're they're white, so it's not showing up white on that light blue, but. You'll see the two, the first two lines, uh. Bars make up thirty-four percent of our call volume from just those two stations. Um, and then below that is the year-to-date numbers. And those locations are producing roughly over, uh. Six thousand calls between them both. Next slide. Again, just some more, uh, month-to-month numbers over the last few years. Uh, just to give you an idea of where we're at and then below that is our total call volume over the last five years. And then in reference to where we're at right now. Next slide, please. Now, specific to Liberty Lake, this is our year-to-date with the heat map. Uh, year-to-date, we've had just over eleven hundred calls, of which seventy-nine percent have been for emergency medical services. Uh, of the that number, fifty-one percent has been for, uh, specifically for advanced life support. Next slide, please. This is, uh, October's run numbers with the heat map. We had, uh, a hundred thirty-three, uh, total calls. Of which a hundred and five or seventy-nine percent were for emergency medical services. Uh, so you can see we we have quite a few, uh, this and that, uh, within our response area here. Um, however, we handle everything appropriately. Um, here, any questions? Yes.
No questions. Uh, con- congratulations on reduction of the number of fires that have happened, but, um. Condolences to the severity of them and what your crews had to go through. I want you to know that I'm very proud of all of you. And when you stood up and said for the first time that I've ever heard, please remember to pray for us. We know the toll it takes on you and we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Mayor had to step off for a minute, so. Full drive home.
Okay, thank you.
All right, we'll move on to Liberty Lake Surinwater District. Hearing none, we'll move on from there. Uh, workshop discussions. Did we decide that we were going to bypass that and action this evening? Given the workshop earlier and the, uh, 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 what we accomplished there, we'll we'll skip it and save it for next Tuesday. So we can just focus on budget. If we got any issues with that. Thank you. Excuse me. All right, we'll move on to general business. Um, at this time, I'll make a motion to approve General Business Consent Agenda Items Ten, A, B, C, D, E, F, G, H, I, and J.
Second.
Second, any discussion? Hearing none, all favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Great, thank you. Uh, council comments. Sorry, no general business, council comments. Hearing none, we'll move on from there. Um, we do not have any public hearings. Uh, we'll move on to item fourteen, resolutions.
Resolution number twenty-three dash two fifty-three. A resolution providing for the disposal of certain inventory items deemed to be surplus to the reasonably foreseeable needs of the City of Liberty Lake, Washington.
Uh, remember time I moved resolution number twenty-three dash two fifty-three?
Second.
Second, citizen comment first?
Yeah.
Any citizen comment? Any on Zoom? Hearing none, any discussion on the motions? Hearing none, all say, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? All right, great. Motion, resolution passes. Thank you. Move on to item fifteen, ordinances, first read.
Mayor Protem, uh, may I make one, um, point one thing out from the agenda bill, which really wasn't clearly on the agenda, but. In addition to the resolution stating those as surplus, uh, PD is also requesting approval for donating one of those vehicles to Scope. So if we could possibly entertain a motion to do that as well, that would be great.
Was that not in our, uh?
It's in the packet.
It is.
No, I understand. Was that not in our agenda or, uh, consent agenda?
It's on the agenda bill. Um, no, it's not in the consent agenda. It's on the agenda bill as part of the resolution, just not specifically within the resolution.
You want a specific motion for that?
Yes, please.
Um, Mayor Protem, I move to add, um, donation of a police vehicle to Scope.
Scope, second. Any discussion?
Red usually.
Yep, I agree. Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Great, motion passes.
Okay, um, I'm going to have to excuse myself. My dad's having an issue. I need to go over and, um, the EMT's there, so. Thank you. I apologize and, um. Appreciate your excusing me.
Thank you, Mayor. Okay, uh, we'll move on to first read ordinance and number two ninety-eight.
Ordinance number two ninety-eight, an ordinance of the City of Liberty Lake, Washington, loving the regular property taxes for the City of Liberty Lake, Washington. In Spokane County for the year commencing January one, two thousand twenty, twenty-four. To provide revenue for the provision of city services as set forth in the city budget.
Thank you. Um, since it's first read, um, no motion needed, uh, citizen comment?
No, you don't have to do that. You just move on to the next item. We'll do that at, what, at the next, uh.
First read, any discussion? You have a discussion, any discussion on first read?
Yes, go. I just want to make, make it clear to the citizens who may be listening that this is a zero percent, uh, increase. Uh, that, uh, the mayor's proposing a budget. So this basically, actually, if you look at the numbers, would actually lower, uh, the income or the, um, property tax.
Great, any other comments? All right, great. Thank you, Kelsey. We'll move right along. No emergency ordinances, thank goodness. Um. Uh, introduction of upcoming agenda items. Mark, would you like to talk about that?
Sure, so we've got. Um, several things that that are forthcoming. We're obviously, uh, had the proposed twenty-twenty-four proposed budget workshop tonight. Um, we elected not, council elected not to have the seven o'clock, so we'll have the special meeting on the fourteenth, which we'll get back into the budget, have the first. Public hearing there. Um, we've got some code amendments that are upcoming on the twenty-first and, um, because Lisa's still. Are are those, d- do you expect all of those to be accomplished in one workshop? Okay, so in in light of that, we've got some other things that we, uh, were considering shuffling around. Had a conversation with both councilmember Kurtz and councilmember Cargill, and there are some items that we probably are going to want to move down. Uh, till later in December, early January. Those are the, um, the transparency ordinance and the, um, social media policy. And so we can, we can shuffle those around. Um, we've, we've also got some of these other things and we can start putting shape around this. Um, the the thing that we need to keep in mind is, uh, assuming that the budget. Discussions go smoothly, we're likely not going to have to use any additional of these. Uh, workshops to discuss budget, but if it doesn't, we may. So, um. You know, just keep that in mind. And so we can start slotting things into into time, um, spots and then make adjustments as needed. Based on the discussion regarding the budget.
I just have one comment to add. Just want to verify our meeting time for next Tuesday. Special meeting is six P M.
That's correct. Yes.
Anybody else have anything to add? All right. We'll move right along. Any final citizen comments?
Mayor Protem, before we move along, with with some of these that are TBD, um, like we we talked about, um. Councilmember Cargill, uh, the transparency, do do we want to slot that in, say, for the second December meeting? Um, do we want to slot it in for the first December meeting, followed by, uh, social media? Um, policy, second meeting in December. Uh, do we want to just wait for the new year to put both of those back on the calendar?
I think January is good for me. I think, yeah.
I don't, I don't mind either way. I mean, I I I don't. If we, e- even if we were slotting into December, if we ran into a situation where we need that time for budget, we can.
So for, so for planning purposes and just to keep the conversation rolling, I'd like to. Slot the transparency and say for the first December meeting. Is that okay?
That's fine.
Okay. So we'll, is that the fifth?
Yes.
We'll put that in for the fifth. And we'll resume that conversation and provide an update to the council then. A- any others that we want to say, uh, date certain on?
Uh, I would reserve the flock safety workshop for after the budget discussion.
Okay. All right.
Anything further, Mr. Administrator?
No, sir. Thank you.
Anybody else? Going once, twice?
No.
Sorry. Well, I was really quick to go through the consent agenda, but, uh, usually we congratulate an appointee to the new commissions. And I believe that, um, Allison is here tonight. And we confirmed that by resolution. Or by unanimous.
Oh, item, yes, you're right.
Yes, we did.
This is item J. So, uh, yes, thank you very, thanks for calling that out. Would you like the honors?
Congratulations. Welcome. You want to say? Can I have say anything? Okay, then we'll see you around. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for pointing that out. Okay, uh, citizen comments? Hearing none, Zoom?
No.
Great. Okay, I guess we are going to go into executive session without the mayor. Um. Mark?
Would, is the question time? I I would say fifteen.
Fifteen?
Yeah.
Okay. Do you need no action will be taken when we come back out and we will adjourn this meeting? So. We'll be out at, what is this? Eight thirty-five, so eight, eight fifty?
As were made and we are adjourned.